Okay, could everybody please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, I am Nina Rosamondo, President of the League of Women Voters of South County. On behalf of the League, I would like to welcome you to meet the candidate's night for the Westerly School Committee candidates. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates, not of the League of Women Voters. And the sponsorship of the debate is not an endorsement by the League of any candidate. Thank you to the members of the audience here at the Westerly Town Hall, the candidates for school committee, Mary Adams, Anne Nardone, Patty Pansiera, and Diana Sarah. Thanks to our viewers on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon Channel 28, and to our listeners on WBLQ. One of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about the issues and candidates, so we can make informed choices when we vote. If you find a forum like this is an essential part of your election decisions, please, please, consider joining the League and help provide Westerly with nonpartisan voter education and advocacy for open and accountable government. The League is open to both men and women. There are membership materials on the table by the door, along with other voter information. Democracy works only when citizens participate in the process. Forums like this can easily become a lost resource to Westerly if citizens are only spectators in the process. So talk with a League member tonight, there are lots of us here. Consider attending a monthly meeting, take the time to learn more. Now, we're here tonight to ask questions of the candidates and to listen respectfully to each of them as they discuss issues important to the future of Westerly and Rhode Island. We appreciate your voter interest and enthusiasm, but please, hold your applause and refrain from reacting to the candidates' answers. This is a nonpartisan forum. Before we start, I would like to clarify a League forum policy. When a candidate is unable to participate, they may appoint a representative to give only a one-minute statement in their behalf at the beginning of the forum. I was officially informed a week ago that Ms. Pansiera would be unable to participate tonight. And this past Monday, I was notified that Ms. Bowdy would give the one-minute statement on her behalf. I would now like to welcome and thank our moderator tonight, Jane Costa. Jane is serving her third term as League of Women Voters of Rhode Island President. She is also on the League of Women Voters Newport County Board of Directors and served as treasurer for both the League of Women Voters Newport County and the League of Women Voters Rhode Island. She has been a resident of Rhode Island since 1970 and resides in Jamestown with her husband, also a League member. She represents the League of Women Voters Rhode Island, on access Rhode Island, and the Rhode Island Voter Access Coalition Boards. I'd now like to welcome Jane.
Thank you, Nina. And thank you, candidates. Diane Bowdy, would you now make a statement for Patty Pansiera?
Patty Pansiera is an incumbent who vows to continue to make a difference in the realm of education and give back to the community that has provided her so much. Patty's guiding principle is that providing a premier quality of instruction will create students who will become lifelong contributors to our community. She graduated from URI and taught French and English in Westerly Public Schools for 28 years. As current Vice Chair of the Westerly School Committee, Patty served on the team that recently negotiated the Westerly Teachers Association contract. Patty also serves our community on the Westerly Hospital Foundation Board, the Westerly College Club, and the Church of St. Clair's Helping Hands Ministry and as a former Dante Society Officer. In the words of her former students, Patty imparted not only academic skills, but also life lessons. She taught the values of hard work, common sense, dedication, commitment, and perseverance. These values remain evident in Patty's continued work on behalf of the students and community of Westerly. In closing, I ask that you vote for Patty Pansiera on November 6th. She is the heart of a bulldog. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowdy. I'm going to read the format for the forums this evening, for the forum. Candidates have drawn lots to determine the seating order. And each candidate will have one-minute opening and one-minute closing statements. The opening statements will be made in seating order. The closing statements will be in reverse order. Because there are only three candidates appearing at this forum, each candidate will be given 90 seconds to answer each question. Once each candidate has answered a given question, each candidate may use an additional 30 seconds for further comment, for rebuttal. Question one, number one, will be addressed first to the candidate in seat one. Question two, for candidate in seat two, and so on. There will also be a series of lightning round questions, addressed to all candidates, which require only a yes/no answer. Each candidate will have, or be given, 10 seconds to elaborate beyond a simple yes/no. So we'll start with the opening statements. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. I am an independent candidate with no party affiliation or teammates. I am asking that you place your confidence in me and elect me to a single seat on the school committee. Tonight, I hope to demonstrate the reasons I am a good choice for that position. Public education should involve members of the public, including parents like me, that have direct knowledge of the outcomes experienced by students. Furthermore, I believe it's our responsibility to be sure we are meeting student needs and the community's expectations. With that in mind, I have been in the community knocking on doors and talking with our neighbors about our schools since I am essentially applying for a job in public service. Where listening to the views of the community I aim to serve is important. Additionally, I have closely followed the matters within the school district, especially the elementary school's redesign, and can immediately contribute to this initiative while respecting the funding resources provided by the taxpayers.
Thank you. And Ms. Sarah?
Good evening. My name is Diana Sarah. Lived in Westerly all my life, graduated from Westerly High School and from the University of Rhode Island. I have a BA in Education and Psychology, and MA in Early Childhood Education. 1983 to 2013, I owned, operated, and directed Wesley Preschool, a private preschool in Westerly known as The Apple. I celebrated over 30 years educating preschool children. I was licensed by the Rhode Island Department of Education. Presently, I am working at Whelan Middle and High School in Connecticut. My public service, 2018 to 2013 Wesley Town Council President, 2004 to 2008 Wesley Town Council, 1998 to 2000 Wesley Town Council, 1988 to 1998 Westerly School Committee. Currently, I volunteer as a co-chair of the 350th Celebration Committee of the Town of Wesley's Birthday. I have received the Women of Rhode Island Federation of Business and Professional Women Award and Athena Leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Nardone?
Good evening. After being a summer resident, I became a full-time resident of Westerly in 1974 when I married my husband, Peter. I hold a BS degree in Elementary Education, an MA degree in Education and Math, and a CAGS degree in Educational Administration. Also, I hold a Doctor of Education degree in Educational Administration Policy and Planning. I worked for 44 years in the Norwich, Connecticut Public Schools, where I served as an elementary and middle school teacher, assistant principal, principal grants coordinator, assistant superintendent, and acting superintendent. I was also an adjunct faculty member for Fairfield University in Connecticut. I currently serve on the Westerly School Committee and serve as its clerk. I am Vice Chair of its Policy Committee. I also co-chaired the search for a new superintendent and the negotiations committee for the new WTA contract. Currently, I serve on the Westerly Hospital Foundation Board, the Shelter Harbor Fire District Board, and I'm an incorporator of the Westerly Library. I am also a member of the Westerly College Club in St. Clair Parish. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. And we're going to go to question one now, and we'll go back to Mary Adams. If elected, what is the most important goal you would like to accomplish during your four-year term?
I think the most important goal that I would like to see is the continuation and eventual passing of this elementary school redesign. This is a plan that I support, that the school committee, the majority of the school committee has voted for. The majority on the building subcommittee voted for it. I think it addresses all of the issues that were raised in the flawed bond that was put before the voters in 2016. It keeps the school at the State Street location, where the majority of our students live, and it respects the funding sources of the Westerly taxpayers. Thank you.
And Ms. Sarah?
Same question.
Same question.
Okay. I would like to, first of all, make sure that our curriculum is strong. Curriculum, I mean by, is teaching and learning, that every grade meets a curriculum mark to go to the next class level, to make sure by the time the elementary children go into the middle school, they have the same background, they have the same foundation. I know children are taught on all different levels, but they have to have the same curriculum per each grade. And then the middle school, make sure that they are taught the same curriculum and background to go to be successful into the high school. Also, I would emphasize myself on the redesign. We need something. Something has to be done, whether it's this redesign or another redesign. I believe right now that the redesign that's before us, it's still being worked on. Really, it is premature right now because what we need to know is how we will, how will it affect the town's bond rating? The borrowing cost? What will RIDE give us? So there's more to do on this redesign. And the subcommittee that's been working on this, I give them a tremendous amount of respect for donating their time and the effort that they put into this design.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah.
Okay.
Ms. Nardone?
I'd like to focus on the new Westerly Public Schools Strategic Plan and Accountability for Learning. Often, in order to get somewhere, you need a roadmap or a GPS. Our accelerated Strategic Improvement Plan, which is now under construction, will ensure that all students will have access to rigorous instruction. Best practices critical to student achievement will be shared with teachers through professional development. For example, how to write measurable educational goals and collect meaningful data, how to develop purposeful lesson planning, how to adjust instruction to meet the needs of all students, and how to give students and parents and guardians feedback. Additional curriculum materials and technology may also be needed, and our budget needs to support these requirements. Accountability is not just measured by test scores. We need to monitor other indicators of success too, such as discipline, parental and community involvement in the actual culture or climate of each school. Administrators and teachers will be accountable for the teaching and their students' progress. I will support the administration staff and students in the continual development, execution, modification, and assessment of the new plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nardone. We're going to now go to question number two, and we'll start with this question with Ms. Sarah. Please explain in detail your support or lack of support for the specific redesign plan adopted by the school committee by a four-to-three vote in July, and include whether or not you will actively campaign for your position.
Okay, like I had touched before, the redesign, I said before, we need something done, okay? Something has to be done with the State Street School and our elementary schools. But right now, I believe there's more work to be done on this plan. Whether I support it or not, it's going to be before the taxpayers, but we need to do more work in order to present this and sell this to the taxpayers. Like I said before about our bond rating, how it will affect the town, the borrowing cost, and what we're getting from RIDE. We need more facts. And I think we're going in the right direction, but there's more to be done. You know, in my past experience on school committee and town council, let me tell you, I've done a lot of the bond referendums for the school. I was in office with Springbrook. I was in office with renovating the high school and the middle school. And what I have learned is this, that you have to, you all have to be together. What I mean by that is, we have to build a coalition around a plan in order for it to pass. We have to be in partnership around a plan. School committee, council, finance board, manager, even bond council has to be in agreement. And we're working towards that. And I don't want this to be a political issue, because it's too important. But I do feel that it's not complete at this time, and we need more information.
And Ms. Nardone?
I was one of three members who voted against the plan back in June, option B. And some of the reasons I voted against it was, at that time, the cost that was presented to the school committee was $63.5 million. I was at a meeting Tuesday, and $71 million came up at that point. I realized something has to be done to the elementary schools, but even then and even now, we don't have enough information, or I don't feel I have enough information. I realize that all of you voters and everyone listening, and who are not listening, they will make the decision. Some of the reasons why I voted against it in June, I didn't feel we had enough information given to us. And I was a principal of a school with 600 students, and I felt that this new building will house around 600 students. It is very difficult, for many reasons, to manage a school, safety reasons, and also teaching, and just managing the whole school. Once again, we have a few more steps in the process. When the final plan of stage two is agreed upon by the state, it will go to the town council for a vote, and it will also go to all of the voters. So I will look for more information, and I will support it if I feel it's right at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nardone. And Ms. Adams?
I just want to say that there is plenty of information out there. I have been attending the Elementary School Redesign Subcommittee meetings on a regular basis. That committee has been meeting for the past 18 months to develop this plan. They have been doing that along with an educational planner and a professional architect. So the notion that there is not enough information, I just don't, I don't accept that. I believe that the plan is well thought out. It followed a process-focused approach. It engaged hundreds of stakeholders in our community. It will bring pre-K and the 5th grade to the elementary level where it belongs. And it'll eventually bring the middle school to grades 6 through 8, which it was originally intended for. And I also believe that it'll allow for the consolidation of other buildings in our district. This plan serves the best interests of students. The information is out there, and I encourage others to find it. Thank you.
We're going now to question three, and we will start with Ms. Nardone. Since the Parkland shooting, young people have been leading the fight for sensible gun laws. But for the third year in a row, the state legislature did not vote on the Safe Schools Act, which would close the loophole in Rhode Island law that permits concealed carry weapons, I'm sorry, permits concealed carry holders to bring guns into schools, school events, and school property. If elected, what would you propose to make schools safe and secure from gun violence? Ms. Nardone?
I have in front of me information from Dr. Wagner, our Commissioner of Education here in Rhode Island. And it says that it's an immediate and binding directive on all school districts, LEAs here in Rhode Island, which prohibits everyone other than active law enforcement personnel from carrying firearms, including concealed carry firearms, on school grounds statewide. And it also requires a protocol for active law enforcement personnel with a firearm to notify LEA personnel upon visitation to school grounds statewide and be visibly identified for the duration of the visit. And this came out at the start of the school year. I support what the Commissioner is saying, and I feel this is important to follow the rules of the Public Commissioner of Education. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Regarding school safety, I do believe the district can do a better job of informing the community of the many things that the district does to keep our students safe. And there is room for improvement, but my understanding is that there are a lot of great things. We have a district safety officer who evaluates our buildings, meets with staff, and conducts annual threat assessments. And all the school buildings, the classrooms, have the ability to lock. We have an access system that nobody can get into the buildings unless they can be seen and heard, and then they need to be buzzed in. So individuals that want to gain access to our buildings can be seen and heard. We also have a raptor system that scans 50 states for the background of anybody who wants to come into our schools. So with all of that said, there is no possible way to completely eliminate a terrible event that we have all come to know and our students are responding to understandably. Our job is to employ a common sense, practical approach that addresses the probable causes that may impede keeping our students safe. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes. Safety in schools is an ongoing concern in our society. I do have to agree that Wesley does have a preventive measure in place. Our buildings are secure. And I believe we are working with schools and community partners, but I'd like to see that improve more and work more with emergency responders, victim assistance, hospitals, to focus on a better emergency planning, including efforts to build positive school environment. One being to establish relationships of trust and respect among the students and staff in order to encourage them to share information. That's a big thing, to share information about a type of maybe someone getting bullied or threatened behavior to prevent future incidents. And also to promote and follow the school rules. That's important, and encourage students to report potential problems. And we also have our school offices in the high school and in the middle school, which is very important, in to have students learn that a police officer isn't a bad thing. It's a good thing too, and have those students to go to, be able to speak to the police officer, and gain a trust. Because some students don't have anybody to talk to. And the police office can be a positive effect and not a negative. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll start with Ms. Adams for question four. And just a reminder that each candidate may use an additional 30 seconds for further comment on the end of each question. So question four to Ms. Adams. In August, Education Commissioner Wagner, with the support of Governor Ramondo, issued an administrative directive banning all guns, including concealed carry, from all Rhode Island schools and school grounds by anyone other than visibly identified active law enforcement officials. Please explain your view on this directive.
My view is that the Commissioner doesn't have the authority to enforce or change current law. And that is the responsibility of our lawmakers. And I do believe that concealed weapon permit holders are the least of our concerns when it comes to school safety. Those people with a concealed weapon permit are well-vetted, and I think that it's not something that we really should be concerned about.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah?
Could you repeat the question?
Certainly. In August, Education Commissioner Wagner, with the support of Governor Ramondo, issued an administrative directive banning all guns, including concealed carry, from all Rhode Island schools and school grounds by anyone other than visibly identified active law enforcement officials. Please explain your view on this directive.
My view is that I would have to agree with Mr. Wagner, Commissioner Wagner, on this issue. And that's all I'm going to say at this point. I'm in agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Nardone?
I've already mentioned that I agree with Dr. Wagner, the Commissioner of Education for our state. Thank you.
So question number five, and we'll start with Ms. Sarah. Westerly spends approximately $21,000 per year, per pupil, which is more per pupil than most other towns in Rhode Island. What is your explanation or justification for the high cost per pupil?
Well, you know, that every town is different. And I commend Town of Wesley of spending $21,000, would you say $21,000? Yeah, $21,000 per pupil cost. Across the board, all children are different learners. Children have to meet, we have to meet the needs of the students. And we, as the school department by law, have to educate those students, no matter what their needs are. So when you look at all that together, and average what the need and the cost will be, yes, Westerly spends $21,000. And that is a very good amount of money spent on our students, and I'm glad we do that. But again, it's all measured on the needs.
Thank you, Ms. Nardone.
I believe we, I got the latest reports, $20,718. And I think the student ratio is one teacher to 11 students. And I looked at Charahose, and I think it's one student, one teacher to 14 students. So depending on what student-teacher ratio a school committee and a school district and a community wants to offer to their students, that raises the cost. There are other reasons for increased costs. Special ed students, special programs. Special ed students, special programs, pathway programs, anything specialized, any support services, remedial math, remedial reading. We need specialists, we need support people, we need teacher assistants. So the more that we give the children, the more we should be getting from the children and from the families too. So I support the amount. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Adams?
I think the explanation for the high cost per student is the contracts that we negotiate. And I have, over the past several years, followed the budget process very, very closely. And in my opinion, it's one of the most important processes to follow. It's tedious and time-consuming, but I think that sometimes what happens is that we go into negotiations or without an understanding of how much money our budget will bear. And so I think the district is starting to understand the monies that we have, because we're finally getting some financial data that is reliable and that we can have some confidence in. And I think that that's the explanation for the high cost per student. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to question number six, and Ms. Nardone will start with this question. When the Bradford School closed, many Westerly taxpayers thought there would be a decrease in the 2017-18 school budget. How do you explain the increase?
There are several reasons why the school budget increased. One would be contract obligations. I know we had a high amount under medical benefits for staff members. We had some serious situations come up with certain staff members. Special ed costs, I believe, went up also. Sometimes with special ed students, they have to be transported out of the district, depending on where they have to go to, might have to go to a school setting in Providence or somewhere else in the state. Those would be some of the reasons why the budget went up.
Thank you. And Ms. Adams?
I actually agree with Ms. Nardone. I think that the healthcare costs, that was something that the district didn't fully understand and/or fully fund. So they were caught with an underfunded healthcare fund, and that needed to be fully funded. I also think that with the Bradford School, what happened when that closed, we didn't fully close the school, we shuttered it. I think that's the terminology. And so, you know, there's still janitorial services there, and, you know, it's not completely taken offline. And I also agree with Ms. Nardone that it was the compounded effects of contracts that we've negotiated and the healthcare ramifications.
Thank you. And Ms. Sarah?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Ms. Adams and Ms. Nardone. Contracts, health costs, student needs, and also out-of-school district students. You know, we try to house the programs in district. Some programs we can, we can get the professional staff to meet that program for students. And it's always nicer to keep the students in district. And we do have a program at the Tower Street School, but sometimes we can't meet those needs, and we have to send them out of district because we, by law, are obligated to meet that student's educational needs. So that's a cost. And also tutoring. You know, sometimes we have to take on students that can't go to school or won't go to school for various reasons, whether it's emergencies, medical, and we have to tutor those students, and we homebound tutor them. And that's a cost. So, you know, amongst everything else that we said here, that sometimes brings the increase up.
Thank you. So we're going to take a break from the general questions and have yes/no questions now. And again, I remind you that sometimes they're called lightning round questions. It's a yes or no answer, and you may have 10 seconds to elaborate on your yes/no answer. 10 seconds. So we're going to start with, let's see, it's Diana, I think. Diana?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So Ms. Sarah, do you support the $2,050 million state bond issue for school construction?
Say that again?
Do you support the $250 million state bond issue for school construction?
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay. And Ms. Nardone?
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Question number two, yes/no. The Joe Foss Institute, an Arizona-based nonprofit group that promotes civics education, has an initiative adopted by 15 states that would require all students to pass the United States Citizenship Test to graduate. Would you support the adoption of such a requirement? Ms. Nardone?
Yes, but we need to see what impact it will have on the budget.
Ms. Adams?
I'm always open for exploring new things, especially in civics education.
That's a yes. And Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
If elected, will you vote yes on a resolution to be shared with the House and Senate Judiciary Committee in 2019 in support of the Safe Schools Act, which would allow only peace officers defined as active and retired police officers and school resource officers to carry guns in school? Ms... Okay, Ms. Adams, sorry.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. If elected, will you vote yes on a resolution to be shared with the House and Senate Judiciary Committee in 2019 in support of the Safe Schools Act, which would allow only peace officers defined as active and retired police officers and school resource officers to carry guns in schools?
I'm not familiar with that, but it sounds like something I could support.
And so you're not going to give a yes or no? You're...
I'd like to get more information about it.
And Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like more information, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you satisfied with the condition of the athletic fields the students use? Ms. Sarah?
You're talking about the football field?
I would say that probably included the...
Okay. We, you know, we try to... Oh, yes or no, right?
Yes or no?
No. No.
No, okay.
No.
No for Ms. Nardone and Ms. Adams?
No.
No. Okay. And now we go to question number seven, right. So we're going to start with, let's see, I think it is Ms. Nardone. So we'll start with question seven. What specific policies do you support to lower the per pupil cost? Specific policies do you support to lower the per pupil cost?
I don't find that as a clear question. Can you elaborate?
Specific policies you support to lower the per pupil... Well, I would say policies that interact with your teachers, your school committee, your departments.
I would think that a full school committee would have to discuss that, to make decision on that.
Okay. And Ms. Adams? What specific policies do you support to lower the per pupil cost?
Well, personally, I'm not sure that the pure pupil cost needs to be lowered. I just think we need to get better results. So I don't think there is any one policy, there's no magic wand to make that happen. I do know that one initiative that may cut some costs is the current initiative before the school committee to privatize our buses, which we currently own a fleet of buses and manage that workforce. That may save money. I'm not sure that that's the only reason that the school committee should look at that initiative, because other things that it may come about are better services, or, you know, a better response to parents and students. So I don't think there is one thing, and I'm not really interested in lowering the cost, I'm interested in getting better results. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes. I'm not aware of a policy that to lower per pupil cost, but as Ms. Adams mentioned, the bus fleet, we've looked at that many, many times, school committee and council, to see if we could privatize our own buses. And every time we looked at it, it wasn't a cost savings at all. And sometimes you have to realize, when you privatize anything, you lose control. And sometimes that's not always the right thing to do when you're, as a school system, to lose control of what you can do and you can't do. And the studies that we have done to date have not been beneficial to privatize our bus fleet.
Okay. And we'll go on to question eight, and I'll just remind you that you do have 30 seconds to rebut any of the questions once we finish them. So question eight to Ms. Adams. The Rhode Island Department of Education has civic standards, but it doesn't mandate civics as a subject according to the department. Please explain your support or opposition to a mandatory semester-long civics course as a high school graduation requirement in Rhode Island?
Having had my third child enter the high school, they do take a civics, it's a citizen and democracy class. It is combined with another, with a student, with a senior project. So I love it when civics is part of the education that we provide our students. I think it's very important for them to understand the rights and responsibilities of citizenship. I do think it could be a bit more robust, and, but I do support civics education for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah?
I do believe that civics is taught in our high school as we speak, and I believe it's a very important course to teach, and civics is part of the social studies curriculum. And it gives the students experience and knowledge of the updated current issues before them. They feel that they have a say, and a say on the issues that are before the world today. And I think it's very, very important.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
I feel such a course is very important as well. I know about three years ago, the local Republican Town Committee offered like a civics B at the high school. And we had some students interested, but we didn't gain a lot of interest from students. I think this is an area that we need to, an area of study that we need to continue to promote. We're doing a couple of things where we have a student representative serving on the Westerly Town Council as a student representative, and we also have one each year on the Westerly School Committee. But all in all, I feel it's very important that students learn about government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, and we'll start with Diana. If elected, what policies would you support to provide for school building maintenance so the citizens of Westerly are assured of at least 50 years longevity from the school redesign project?
Well, maintenance in the school building, it's been always an ongoing issue. But today, we are facing more difficult challenges, I should say, than ever, meeting the financial challenge of building, operating, and maintaining school buildings. That is why in the general election, we had that bond question before us, to approve or reject providing state assistance to our towns for construction of new public schools or renovation. A school maintenance program should be in place, and I believe it is, but you always need to tweak it, you always need to work on it, because a school system, in order to prolong the life expectancy of a school building, needs a good maintenance program. A facility maintenance program is a school, I feel, is a school's tool for protecting its investment in school facilities. And I tell you the truth, I was saddened to see Bradford School close, because right now, without a plan, what we're going to do with that building, maybe we should have thought of what we're going to do if we're closing it for school purposes and teaching and learning children. What could we do with that building?
Thank you.
Because really, the building is being neglected.
Thank you. And Mary Ann?
The taxpayers, first the town council will make a decision on option B after we receive a go-ahead from the state. And then it will be up to the new town council to decide whether or not it continues. And then if it does continue, it will go to the taxpayers, most likely November of 2019. So that project would take care of maintenance and renovations that are needed throughout the elementary schools anyway. But where I worked, we took a certain percentage of the total budget every year that was used for maintenance. It was voted on by the school committee, and the town council there would agree upon it, and that amount of money was set aside each year for maintenance of all school buildings. I think that's a good approach, rather than just so much per building, but really look at it and be committed to doing that every year. Thank you.
Mary?
As part of the elementary school redesign process, the state of Rhode Island requires that we fund building maintenance at a certain level, so that they're not giving us money, our share of the state monies, and we have no plan in place to fund our buildings. So we will be required, as part of this ride process, to have a certain percentage in our budget each year. And I just want to get back to the Bradford issue. It's my view, if we wouldn't have maintenance issues in our buildings, if we had fewer buildings to maintain. The Bradford School was recommended for closure by the previous superintendent on multiple, multiple times. And it was also recommended that we close the Bradford School by two education planners and architects and engineers hired by this district. So I really think that if we had fewer buildings, we only need three elementary schools in Westerly. And I believe that this new plan has those three buildings in mind, and that is State Street, Spring Brook, and Dunn's Corner School. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll start with Mary Ann on this question. So, we'll start with Mary Ann on this question. Government should be transparent. What specific steps would you support if elected to the school committee, so the public clearly understands school committee proposals and decisions?
Could you read that again?
Yes. Government should be transparent. What specific steps would you support if elected to the school committee, so the public clearly understands school committee proposals and decisions?
We have steps in place. I think one thing is that we need to work better as a full committee. We will have some changes on the school committee, and there needs to be more respect for one another's opinions. We need to act more professional, and I feel that all of the steps are in place for us to continue as a school committee. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
As somebody who has attended probably hundreds of school committee meetings, I think probably one simple thing that we can do is to give the, anybody who comes to our meetings, or is watching from home, the relevant documents that the committee is reviewing. I often am very frustrated, because it could be a complex financial document that, that the committee is discussing, but I can't follow along, because I don't have that same document in front of me. So, I think that's prob, I will expect that those documents be attached to the agendas in advance, so that everybody can follow along at the same, at the same pace. I also think that one of the greatest things is having things livestreamed. Even tonight, there was a, a young mother that has three children, she could not attend because she couldn't find a babysitter. So, having these livestreamed, these meetings, where parents can follow along from home is essential. So, that's what I would do. Thank you.
And Diana?
Yes, I agree with Mrs. Nardone and Mrs. Adams. Working together is very important. You may not always agree, and you know, after the vote is taken, that we have another issue to, to talk about. Respect for one another, respect for one another's views, keep openness mind, and your, your documents, your information, open to the public. The, we have two meetings a month, I believe, is your workshop and your regular, and they're both on TV. They're both livestreamed, which is a wonderful thing. When I was on the school committee years ago, we used to have our workshops at the schools, and that was nice too, because you got to see the schools, condition of the schools, and parents from that area would attend your meetings. But now, we have both meetings livestreamed.
Thank you. So, rebuttal?
Yes, so, I also think that part of the, regarding civility at the meetings, I believe that, that the chairperson of the meetings needs to facilitate those meetings where discussion and debate are encouraged, and where there is respect for opposing viewpoints. And I also think that treating people that come to the podium, when, when a parent comes to, or a community member, whomever, comes to the podium and has a question, they are often met with blank stares, and so, I, I just hope that whoever comes to the podium is treated with respect as well.
Thank you. And Ms. Nardone? Comment?
I'm just going to say, for the sake of our kids, revive civil discourse. Civil discourse can be, whether it is at our meetings, face-to-face, or on social media. We are role models for our students, and, once again, treat others as you would like to be treated. I'd like to comment about the agendas and backup information. As a school committee member, the information is usually available the Friday before the Wednesday meeting. You can either, we can either get it online, or we can pick up a packet at, at the superintendent's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're going to, okay, so we'll have one more question, we're looking at the clock now, and we'll have one more general question, and we will go to Mary, and it will be a general question. So, according to the Westerly Sun, February two thousand and eighteen, in the summer of two thousand and seventeen, the new superintendent, Mr. Garso, stated that one of his goals is to increase the performance of Westerly students on standardized tests. What steps do you think the school system needs to take, to improve district overall performance on standardized tests? Please be specific, and Ms. Adams, we'll start with you.
Well, I'm of the opinion that it is critical for students to have options. I, I don't want to keep students in Westerly, I would prefer for them to want to stay with Westerly. And I also think that when students have options in their learning, they tend to be more engaged and, in their learning, and, and quite possibly would, may want to come to school in, in greater numbers, not that they're not coming to school, but, so, I think that options, I would like to see lots of options, and beginning in the middle school, where oftentimes, at least my children experienced that they were assigned their, their elective classes rather than choosing them. So, I think that maybe that will just have a natural flow into better test scores. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah?
Yes, regarding standardized test scores, I believe that was the question. Standardized test scores are very important. They're very important for our district, for our town. But I feel that we have put too much emphasis on the standardized testing. I'm for them, we need to improve them, they mean so much for a student in our district, but we need our teachers in the classroom to be able to teach the curriculum for that grade level and be creative. We can't always teach to a test. We've got to stop that. We can do both, but we are holding, we are, we are tightening up the hands of a teacher to teach what they love to do most. And we're putting pressure, not only on the teachers, but the student and the parents. So, I think standardized testing is important, but also allow a teacher to teach in her classroom.
Ms. Nardone?
Please repeat the question.
Yes. According to the Westerly Sun of February two thousand and eighteen, in the summer of two thousand and seventeen, the new school superintendent, Mr. Garso, stated that one of his goals is to increase the performance of Westerly students on standardized tests. What steps do you think the school system needs to take to improve districts, district overall performances on standardized tests? Be specific, please.
Dr. Garso talks about three circles, and I'll talk about two. One is strengthening core instruction, the systems of support that ensure college and career readiness for all students, and improving educator effectiveness would be in the second one. Making sure that our teachers and staff are trained well, know the mission of the school district, that's part of the, the district improvement plan, that they're given the support to become better teachers, to be able to meet the needs of all students, to be creative, yet they will have that new accelerated improvement plan as their roadmap, knowing what the district is expecting of them. That's all part of the testing program. And again, as, as Mrs. Sarah said, testing is not the only point that we're looking for in our students. We're also looking for social adjustment, getting along with others, being good citizens, being involved in activities. So, those are all important facets of, of our students. Thank you.
Right, and the format does say that you have thirty seconds to respond to the last question, does any, do any of you candidates wish that thirty seconds? Yes, Ms. Nardone?
Part of that would be our career pathways program. We have a, a number of specialized programs, opportunities for our students to learn a skill in addition to their traditional high school education. For example, we have the culinary program, we have cosmetology, we have our new medical pathway program that started this fall, where we have a partnership with the Amer, with the Westerly Ambulance Program and, and the Westerly Hospital for students who are interested in a medical field, along with P-Tech. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, and now for closing statements, and we will start with Ms. Nardone.
Having spent over forty years in public education, I understand what works and what doesn't work in a classroom, a school, and in a district. I bring my experience to the Westerly School Committee. I am committed to making our schools stronger and safer, in ensuring that our students become responsible adults who are prepared for the careers of tomorrow. I bring with me my various professional experiences, and my love for children and helping students. I have, I have been a champion of students and families of diverse economic and ethnic backgrounds. I am organized, a good listener, will do my homework, act professionally, and live by the motto, treat others as you would like to be treated. I am seeking another four-year term on the Westerly School Committee. Your vote on November sixth will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary Adams, for a closing statement? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it should be Ms. Sarah, I believe. Yes, sorry.
Thank you. I've spent my entire adult life in education, teaching and advocating for students, always looking ahead, but with my past experience as a guide, if elected, I promise to work diligently every day for the Wesley Public Schools. While being fiscally responsible to our citizens and taxpayers, I will strive to ensure a safe environment, where our young people will get the best education possible. With my educational experience, experience on the school committee and town council, I believe I could be a positive knowledgeable asset for the West, on the Westerly School Committee, and I'm asking you for your vote on November sixth.
Thank you. And Ms. Adams?
Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you to the League for all you do to make it happen. As we've seen here tonight, one of the key issues in this campaign is the redesign of our elementary schools, and it appears that I am the only candidate that fully supports the plan that is underway and moving towards full approval from the Rhode Island Department of Education. After more than five years of studying this issue, we must move forward, mostly for our students, but also for educators and staff in this district, who are working in substandard and uncertain conditions that we cannot subject them to any longer. I am asking for you to put your confidence in me, and I will work to represent you, as I focus on the best interest of our students, and for the staff that I believe want to meet the educational needs of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for stepping up and being the candidates that you are. This was some wonderful and valuable.
Thank you for having us. I'd also like to, for the TV cameras, thank our candidates, those here at the Westerly Town Hall, and our viewers on public access television, and our listeners on WBLQ. I'd also like to thank many people for helping with this forum, the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund for providing funding, the Town of Westerly for the use of the town hall and council chambers, and the staff at Westerly Town Hall for their help and cooperation. Many thanks to my fellow members of the League of Women Voters South County, who have worked many hours on planning this event, and to the citizens of South County, who submitted a record number of questions for the forums this year. Thanks to the Westerly Public Access Television Studio, PEGRI-TV, for handling the live broadcast and frequent rebroadcasts of this program. Thanks to WBLQ for the live streaming of this forum, and thanks to the local media for covering this forum. The forum will be rebroadcast on Cox Channel Seventeen and Verizon Channel Twenty-eight frequently between now and Election Day. There is a rebroadcast schedule on the table at the back of the room, and on the League of Women Voters website at www.lwvri.org. There will also be a link to a video of this forum on the League website, and on the League Facebook, which is leagueofwomenvoters-southcounty. Now, for the audience, hopefully, most of you got, or all of you got, the audience survey cards, we'd really appreciate your feedback, so fill them out, and there's somebody at the back of the room with a basket for you to put them in. Thank you.
Thank you.[1252.61][1252.61](pause)
They were very long, yeah.[1256.01][1256.01](pause)[1257.01][1257.01](end of transcript)